Good evening and welcome to the SOAC meeting of Tuesday, October 23rd, 2018. If you would like to join me in saluting the flag.
Flag the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like a motion to approve the following warrants.
Do you have that motion?
I would like to ratify the payroll warrant from 10/10/18 for $168,555.54. Approve an expense warrant for $10.11, I mean, I'm sorry, a payroll expense warrant for 10/11/18 for $86,000. Approve a wire warrant for 10/16/18 for $9.67. Approve an expense warrant for 10/16/18 for $169 and $118.7. And approve an expense warrant as a debit adjustment for 10/22/18 for $181.92. And approve an expense warrant for 10/23/18 for $9,051.34.
And you have that motion.
Okay, and I will second the motion. All in favor? And now I have approved monthly meeting reports in minutes from other departments. And I'd like to entertain a motion for the Recreation Committee from 9/6/18 and 10/4/18.
You have that motion.
I'll second it, I will second it, all in favor? And announcements, Trick or Treat and Halloween events will be held Halloween night, Wednesday, October 31st. Trick or Treat in the Village and Common area from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. Meet at the fire station for a parade to the Common will leave promptly at 7:30 PM. Costume contest in the gazebo upon arrival at the Common. And does anybody else have anything for announcements to begin? Okay, we'll go on to our agenda. First thing on our agenda is the Cooley Hill property. And if the letter to not fulfill, I just want to say that's just a formality, we know that it's wanted by M.G.D. the way they did it today. This is for the purchase and sale of the Cooley Hill. And let's see how many signatures we need on this.
We should have a motion to approve.
A motion to approve.
You have that motion.
I'll second.
All right, and a motion to approve that the three of us sign the purchase and sale?
Right, we had a motion, we have a second.
Okay, all in favor?
And while you're signing it, this takes a tremendous liability off the town.
I know it does. Oh, I don't sign here too. So this is all set. I know, that is absolutely ridiculous to get that off of us. I agree 100%. All righty. And our next one is to open this special town meeting warrant again.
You have a motion to open the warrant.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have to, we're going to remove Article 3, which is to fund six months of the advisory board stipend for 2018. So I guess they're just going to pay that out of their budget that they have now. And then the same thing with Article 5, the Conservation Commission wages. They're going to take that out of the budget FY18. And then to transfer, Article 13 is to transfer $11,676.78 to the fleet from the highway.
That was already acted on on the annual.
That was already, yeah, I forgot you told me, that was already acted on at the annual town meeting, so we're going to remove those. And then, so then, we do have, Karen had also put them all in order, so, I mean, like, different ones for how they're going now. So they're all in order, because you each have a packet.
The recommended order.
They're all recommended order. And then we are going to add from the Treasurers Department.
That was a bill for $400 and some odd dollars.
FY18 bill for the T&amp;G for $400.18.24. He's going to take that.
Because it got misdirected and now we have to cover it.
Yeah, we'll have to cover it. Okay, now, are we going to vote tonight to support these acts?
Yes, I mean, while you have a little bit, do your recommendations.
Okay, do we want, yeah, because I don't think we have anything more.
All right, so, Madam Chair, I'll give you a motion to remove Article 3, Article 5, and Article 13, the six months of advisory board clerk stipend, the conservation clerk wages, and the $11,000 transfer. And to go ahead and add the Treasurer Department FY18 bill for the T&amp;G.
You have a second.
All in favor, any discussion on these? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
How is the advisory board getting paid then? The $250?
The $250, that was for when Maureen Morano is just going to come out of this year, is I guess.
Out of FY19, what happened is Town Council said that because these wages are not considered paying a prior year bill, that it wasn't really appropriate to put it on the warrant as such. So she said, what she suggested is that for those two, the conservation and for the advisory board, you take it out of the fiscal year 19 budget.
Right, and then what you would do is that allow like transfers from reserve funds to cover it, so if you needed it to cover this year's wages, you would just, between our two committees, we could just sign a transfer from the reserve and cover it for you.
Very well, thanks.
There's a lot of other mechanisms that we can cover, especially small amounts like that.
Okay, so we'll, SOAC will do now, is we will vote to see how we're going to support these different items. Okay, the first one is the Bylaw Committee driveway bond article.
Yeah, motion to.
Motion to support.
I thought we were going to state that we didn't really require it, because between the bylaw and the whole process we went through with Town Council to get the policy written up and the procedure available, now, from what I understand, it hasn't really gotten well published, because I know the Advisory Committee knew nothing about the fact that that action has been taken by the Highway Department. So, I mean, I'll second it for discussion, I guess.
Well, I thought we had straightened this out the last time we met with Herb, and we also had Mr. Cook was here, so I thought this was all straightened out.
Mr. Cook didn't like the rate schedule that Herb had, because it was about 2X what this represents. So, one of the problems that I have with this particular is that the bond is intended to protect the town, and with the cost of rectifying, if somebody doesn't adhere to the permit requirements, or there is, you know, some sort of remediation required, that these bonds are definitely insufficient to cover the town's risk. So, if you recall, the rate schedule, I believe that the Highway Superintendent submitted to us was, I want to say the low end was at either $2,000 or $2,500, and the top end was at $5,500 for one that required a covert. So these permit fees are much lower than what's considered usual and customary, and we've already got a procedure now that much more firmly refines, and our bylaw already covers it. So I, I mean, my view is that we would not support, but.
I remember coming back, but I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, the Highway Department said policy should take care of that.
Exactly.
So we can, we're not going to recommend it, and we can always pass over it that evening.
Yep.
Yeah, one of the things I'd like to do, Karen, if you could get that full package that we got from KP Law that we've instituted as our procedure and get it over to Mr. Gillis, I would appreciate that.
Our next one is the new job position, position job description for a Board of Health Transfer Station Manager. I would like a motion that we support this.
Motion to support.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the next one is from the Treasurer for their bills from KP from FY28 for $1,018.814.49. I would like a motion to support that article.
Can I give you a motion for both Article 3 and Article 4 to support those, since they're just to cover prior year bills?
Yep, you get the motion, I get the second.
All in favor?
Aye.
To increase, the next one, number 5, Article 5 is to increase chief blanchard's salary by approximately $6,000 per year.
I'm sorry, keep going.
To put him in proper alignment with the sergeant's contract salary. I'd like a motion to support that.
You have a motion to support.
And I'll second, but just a little discussion on the phrasing, I don't know if this has already been in the KP law, instead of $6,000 per year, it should just state by $6,000 in fiscal year 19.
Okay. Did you talk to Michelle about that?
She, no, she didn't, she didn't.
Yeah, your points were.
Because really, honestly, what we should be doing is revoting the budgetary line item for the chief's salary, if we look up what was on the annual town meeting. The proper structure for this warrant article would be for us to vote to raise and appropriate, would be for us, and actually, I would check with Donald Fagno, honestly, for the phrasing, because we did a bunch of this, I think, two years ago, where we changed budgetary line items. But there's a particular phrasing that you do for that article. And we were trying to sign this tonight, though.
And you'll have to re-sign it.
That's what we'll have to do.
And I'll re-sign it sometime tomorrow.
I can swing by, I can swing by either, probably in the evening.
I'll work on it tonight.
I think we can, I think we can confer what it's supposed to be.
So how do you think this should be reworked?
I'll talk to Donald Fagno, come on, tonight, and then I'll.
It probably should be, we have to look up the line item number that, actually, probably the safest thing is to get the account number from the accountant.
But I don't think we've ever done it like that before.
We did two years ago. Two years ago, we revoked four different line items on the budget.
We can, well, we can say what the line item is, but I don't think we need the account number for it, just say what line item it is.
Yeah, we can just say what line item it is.
What line item it is.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, so long as we have something that indicates, it's just that we're.
By $6,000 for fiscal year 19.
What I would do is I would, I would take the amount that it was originally voted and say, basically, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of money to increase the police chief's salary from X to Y, or take any action relative thereto.
Oh, I don't know, I don't know if that's going to confuse them when you do that. I would just say, to take and add $6,000, I would give a line item and to add $6,000 per year. That's how I would do it. I don't think I would put in the whole salary.
Yeah, it would be going from 72, 189 to 78, 189.
We could have the information available, but I don't know if I would put the whole thing in there.
Well, Town Council already approved this.
She approved it the way it was, Town Council did.
Well, yes, she did, she did.
Okay, that's fine, we'll just leave it that way, we can leave it that way.
Okay, you know what I'll do?
We'll put it in the motion.
When I do the, when I do the explanations, handout, I'll add that.
Yeah, if you would, yeah. And then, if we need, if we need to do any hijinks with the, from a standpoint of budgetary line item, we can put it in the motion, because it still meets the intent of the warrant article, so we should be good.
So, we're all in favor?
So we have a motion, we have a second, and let's move forward.
We're all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number six is the salary increase for the CEO's salary, and from, to $11,000 annually, and it went up, do we have how much, Karen, that one?
It's $2,000 some odd dollars.
Yeah, we can, we can put in the information.
It is, oh, it's definitely in handout.
It's got to be there, it's got to be in there, okay. I'd like a motion to support that.
Motion to support.
Second.
All in favor?
And again, none of these that I'm giving you tonight have the explanations, because I expected you to sign it, and I just figured, everybody saw these so many times.
Okay, and the next one is seven, and that is for the highway, it's $2,700 for safety equipment, and that's a raised inappropriate, and I'd like a motion to support this article.
Second.
All in favor?
Is that not part of his budget already?
No, it was not included in the baseline expenses, we started including safety monies in last year's budget, and for whatever reason, he didn't put in for the separate line item this year.
Because I know he put it in last year.
Right, exactly, and then it failed to propagate this year, yeah.
Our next one is Article 8, and that's number one for the highway, to approve $10,000 more for tree work, and that was raised inappropriate, I would like a motion to support this article.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the next one, number nine, is $39,000 for a generator for the Highway Department. I know that this was on the annual, and we had passed it over till the fall, and this will come out of stabilization, and that would need a two-thirds vote when we do that, so I'd like a motion to support that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, we have number 10, the Rice Corner Road drainage repair, and I see that it's $33,000, and I would like a motion to support that.
This one's hard.
I know this is a very difficult one.
So can I ask Mr. Cleveland where we stand with any feedback from Conservation or others?
No.
So, motion to pass over for now, because we just don't know, it's on, it's, our recommendation would be to pass over.
Pass over, because I don't, I don't support this at all.
Well, we've got to get it done, but.
I know we have to get it done, but I don't feel that it's up to the town to have to pay for this.
Right, but I think it's important to put it in front of the townspeople, though, because here's the deal, to me, is that water, like runoff water, is also part of infrastructure, just like roads themselves are part of infrastructure. Granted, it's the state's land that's causing us the water problem, but I think it's important for us to decide as a town meeting whether we want to say, you know what, it's more important to us that both the homeowners across the street are taken care of as a community, and that the potential future owners in that area are taken care of as a community, and then fight it out over the $33,000 with the state than it is necessarily to leave a problem that's there.
Well, the way I feel on this is, once we start doing it for this area, then other people are going to probably come forward too, and say that they have drain off, water drains coming from properties, and they're going to want it fixed too, so I just think we're opening like a whole can of worms if we do something like that.
I think it's different than when the runoff is coming from another private person's property, and there's some accountability there versus the state.
If that was private property, the town could put in a lien.
With this, we can't, because this state-owned property.
You do, and they have.
I know, I've gone up there. And they didn't favor it.
But we have the third, back to, the notion to pass over is not that we're afraid of this, saying no to this, getting done, what we're saying is that this, to get it in front of the town so that they understand it, and that we want to fight the good fight to get the monies.
Steve, did you have a question?
Not a question, I just wanted, the advisory supported it, and we thought it was a law worth a safety issue, you know, to start damaging the roads and various other things, ice conditions, whatever.
But it's not damaging the road, what's going in, there's a culvert that runs under the road, and it's going down into the people's land that have built homes, they've built homes in like, you almost could say a gully, and what it is, is this drain off water goes down into their backyard, right?
And the water going across the road works just like on Quaid Walk Street, the ends of the asphalt, how's that break off?
Yeah, so it is actually damaging the road.
That's, that, we were based around some of that sort of insight.
But also, what it is, what it's doing too, I mean, it's going into these people's properties.
Right, okay, just, that's all.
So where do we stand?
So we're recommending passing over, there's support, and actually executing it.
Support to pass over this article?
So you're not supporting it, you're recommending passing over, that's what you're saying.
Yes, pass over.
I'll second the motion, but I'm going to vote against.
Okay, yeah.
I vote to pass over this article.
So it's two to one.
Two to one to pass over.
The next one is 11, it's to raise two buildings for $9,000 from the Board of Health, and I would like.
Motion to support.
Second.
Support, all in favor?
Aye.
What are the two buildings, I may ask?
It's one on South Maple Street, I can't think of them.
Lower River, right?
And the one's on, the other one is on River Street.
Lower River.
No, it's on River, Lower River's down, yeah, it's on River Street. So we're all set with that one?
Yeah, then these were not something that could be rehabbed.
Yeah, there was a third one that was reviewed, but it's in condition that can get repaired.
One of them, you couldn't, it's like set on a cliff, so you couldn't, you can't do anything with that. Okay, all righty, the next one is number 12, it's the fund fleet account.
Did we do, did we do, did we vote that?
We didn't vote it.
No, that's what we're going to do.
No, we didn't, we didn't vote the raise one.
Oh, okay, can we?
So a motion to support raise, number one.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
The next one is 12, and that's from the fund fleet account, it's.
That's based on the recommendation, recommendation by the CIPC to generally fund it.
For $15,000 to $20,000 as recommended by the state.
And then, I was given a figure of 20, it was, it's up to 20 now.
So they want us to take 20 out to do that?
Good.
A recommendation, I mean, I'd like to, a recommendation or a motion to support $20,000?
Do you have that motion to support?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Would this add that as a line item, standard line item to the budget at that point?
Uh, no.
No.
No, and the reason for that is that if we start getting more scientific in how we do it, we, that amount might change year over year, it's not necessarily a standard funding item, like, if we buy a couple of new vehicles, then we might not need as much in that particular fund.
Because that's used for repair.
Right, because that's used to repair, so, but while we have an old fleet, we probably want to fund it at a certain level, so, the other advantage is that by funding it as a warrant article instead of operational budget, instead of automatically getting turned back at the end of the year to recycle in the free cash, because it's voted as a warrant article, it'll stay there year over year unless we physically vote to move it out. So if we need to, if we need to accumulate funds because we have an aging fleet, it's another way to do that, separate a stabilization so that it's actually accessible if something goes kaboom.
So that line accumulates, got it, this year, okay.
And this requires, if it's coming from stabilization, it requires a two-thirds vote.
Right, but once it's in there, it can just be, it can be spent as needed.
Okay, well, I'd like a motion to support this.
Yeah, the motion is.
Second.
Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and the next one is number 13, to a vote to support the fire truck, and that's for a pumper truck, and we're going to spend up to $280,000, and I guess we will borrow that money to do, along with the police station. Motion to support?
Motion to support.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
Please support. And you do know, obviously, you all know about the grant that Captain, and.
Yeah, I work on.
All right, so.
So I know my goal with that would be, is if the town chooses not to support it at the town meeting, given the timing of everything, I'd like to recommend that next year, this next annual town meeting that we have coming up, that what we do is we actually hold one town meeting per our bylaws, which is the Friday after the election, our local municipal election, with just the non-money articles except for this, because what worked out really well at last year's town meeting was splitting the town meeting, and if we get rid of all the administrative stuff, right, one day, and then have another town, and have the continuation of that same town meeting set for like the middle of June, first or second week of June when we normally do it, and do all the money articles then, it will save us from the marathon town meeting, and that worked out really, I thought, pretty rational.
All right, well, that's something, you know, we can discuss when the time comes.
Yeah, but I.
Let's get, so let's back up to that, because I like the idea, so.
Because that's what we always did, we would do the whole thing.
Yeah, yeah, but again, I think that the idea of.
And go through everything as one money article.
Right, and I would add this one to that, if it doesn't pass this time, because it would allow us to roll up that lending with the, with the police station and not get the secondary funding fee, because the big reason to try to do this either now or sometime by May would be so that we don't have to pay a second loan origination fee, and it saves the town a bucket of money from the borrowing perspective, so.
So if we were to back up from first of May to the timing for calling the town meeting, so we would want to, we would want it on an agenda for March?
Yep, yes.
Right, so Karen, can you put that on, you take a look for that?
Thank you.
So I guess that's it on this, so I'd like to, a motion to close the special town meeting warrant.
You have a motion.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
All right, and then, we're going to change things around, weren't you going to do some change wording, so we really can't sign these tonight?
Well, no, now we're not going to remember, we can't sign them. We're just going to add that warrant to the after information figures to the recommendation.
Why can't we sign them tonight?
Oh, you can, you can.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're going to.
I would like to, I would like to mention is about the fire truck, there was an email also from Peter O'Connell saying that he was working with Peter to kind of maybe have some wording that we could give him a mandate on the floor, whatever, which would kind of ease it into the grant, or if, say that we didn't use the grant, and that, that kind of must be changed.
Right, and I, and I know the fallback position is that, let's try to have the town meeting early enough to get it rolled in with the police station, if we can't get it this time around.
I would also, I would like to make now a motion to sign the special town meeting warrant.
You have that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. This one goes to the next one. Next one is the Alderbus.
The Alderbus, but these are all right here for them.
That's the election.
Yeah, those are the other election. I would like to have a motion to appoint Brenda Parish to be our representative, Berkeley Representative for the SCN Alderbus.
You have that motion.
Second.
I really appreciate this.
Yeah, I do too.
Thanks, Debra.
Yes.
I'm pleased to see that somebody stuffed up to this and congratulate Brenda for doing that.
Yeah.
Then I would like to have a motion to sign the state election warrant for the election on, um, the sixth of November.
You have that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. And Karen, do you know if Mike's already posted the ballot up on the website so people can see?
I don't know. I, I don't know.
Well, I know early voting, I mean, early voting started yesterday.
Right.
That's going on right now.
You want mine?
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, I got another one.
You got another one? They used to have good power.
I know, I think we all do.
The job in the early two thousands was to sign hundreds of documents a week.
Next on the agenda is, um, a wage authorization. And this came from the Highway Department, and it's for employee Jade Haley. And, uh, the position is a emergency operator.
Motion to support.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm starting thinking about applying, so.
Hmm. Got some little bit of help this afternoon.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we did. Okay, he, they showed us, we have a, we have a CDLs and everything. Now, we have, the next one is, it's a sign a grant contract, and this is to consult to study solar energy and energy in the town. And this is one that Scott had applied for, and we got it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Peter.
So would you like to talk about that one?
Sure. Um, so this is a design-only grant. So one of the reasons, I know we got some correspondence from the CIPC. The reason why we hadn't really consulted with them in advance was that we wanted to see if we could get the design money so what we could bring forward was a, a fully, I mean, a lot of folks talk about, you know, we get these ideas and we put it in front of people, we don't really have the numbers or a plan yet. So the concept here is that the state has offered money to do feasibility studies and analysis for certain types of solar projects over fifteen KW annually. And one of the, uh, things that we left out of the police station because, uh, we were trying to keep things like under budget and on time was, um, a, a cover for the police cars so that they wouldn't, they would be able to keep the cars ready without having to necessarily keep them like running all the time, keep the snow off of them, stuff like that. So, um, one of the types of solar that, um, the state has done a bunch of designs throughout has been doing like carports and canvies. Um, so basically, we put together a kind of concept, um, got a design house out in the Midwest to at least quote like what the total cost of the project would be, and then give some conceptual design stuff for free. So we got that from them, uh, at no charge. Um, included that in the grant application along with, uh, you know, some Google Earth site plans and stuff like that to, to talk about it. And, uh, the math behind what the power consumption is at the police station would give us basically about a seven to eight-year payback of the difference between the cost of the project minus the design cost, which is fully covered by the grant. It's not even a matching grant, it's just a, a grant to go do the study, okay? Um, which is why we didn't have to take it to town meeting, if anyone's wondering about that, because we don't need to have any matching funds. We had to show that if we needed any small amount of additional funds, that we could cover it. But we were able to show sufficient commitment by saying, hey, we're hiring a consultant and planner to handle grants, and they would handle the administration of this. So that's the town's contribution to the design. Um, and basically, it'll put us in a position where we'll know really the exact cost, how much power we could get, um, and how we could best leverage it. Because I don't know if people are aware of it, but, um, our governor let the, um, net metering, uh, cap removal, uh, bill that had gotten through our House of Representatives and Senate die, uh, when the Senate went off. So right now, solar in the state of Massachusetts is not, um, really, um, like the net metering, there's no longer, we're actually above the cap that was set. So the power companies have no obligation to allow anyone to get into the type of net metering arrangement and allow funds to come back to the town like what we have on the landfill. So that's something that, um, if you're concerned about solar growing, I've, I've, I've had some discussions with some of the solar contractors in the area about how, what a negative effect that's having. The one advantage we have on this project is that, and I talked to a local designer, is because we have this complex of buildings, if the police station wouldn't use all of the power, we could actually set up the circuits from the get-go to include, um, both the meter for here and there. And that would allow us to take full advantage of that, even if it made more than what the police station actually uses. Um, so the position of that location actually puts us in a good place that the design, uh, we could, we could leverage every amount of power that it creates to assist in that payback and assist in that, in that mitigation of costs going forward for the town. So that's the, that's the concept, and this grant will allow us to get a real plan that we can put in front of people with real numbers. So.
And you talk about seven or eight-year payback, but the reality is, is we have the ability to go after another grant with a good plan.
Yeah, right.
So that it may not be seven or eight years, it may be paid for.
In this same, in this same grant program, exactly. So I'm saying worst-case scenario, if we didn't get another penny towards it, it'd be a seven or eight-year payback. But the same grant that we applied for, for the design, is also eligible for up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollar construction projects. So we would potentially be able to complete this grant and then go after another, and the state would know how we had handled the design. So it would probably be in our favor from the standpoint of if we, if we manage this grant appropriately and get the design done appropriately, there's a good chance that we could just get it fully funded.
Okay.
And it's a novel approach, which is a couple of points.
Yes, good.
Is, is a question, is this, uh, what Peter was referring to in an email earlier today, twelve thousand dollars? And so the twelve is for the design?
Correct.
And this is what you're saying, does not need to be approved by town, uh, meeting or anything else?
Correct. Because, because it's, it's really the only overhead we have in the way that this grant is written, is we have to provide the resources to kind of guide the project, but we don't have to do any matching funds. And so it's not like we're gonna pay six thousand dollars of the design. We just have this amount of money to get the design done with. So there's, there's no town expenditure other than some administrative overhead to, to keep track of it. And then that'll give us the plan to put in front of the capital improvement committee. And, and, and he just, he was a little too quick in with the email, because my plan was, was that now that this was approved, to at least do, to eliminate it, plan and turn it in for, for the eleven-nine deadline that the CIPC had put out for the five-year plans coming from our office. And he, he sent his email two weeks too early, because he would've had a plan within about another week. So.
But he'll have a plan, I would say.
He will have a plan. So.
Thank you.
Okay. I would like now to, uh, have the board vote to let the chairman sign the contract.
Motion to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Get some, some positive momentum, so.
Now, listen, Karen, this just requires my signature on both lines.
Which one is that?
This is the second one.
Oh, that's it, yes. This is just, um, what I'm gonna need just your-
Okay.
And I'll fill out your-
Alright, thank you. And next one on our agenda is to sign the local cultural caution, uh, count, uh, allocation for the Brookfield Cultural Council.
And this is just to allow the, the state ones to promote the local-
Motion to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Stuff that's not in Steve's budget.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hey, I'm trying to keep as much off the budget as possible.
There you go, I'm with you there. Makes everyone happy. This is like the, I thought, it's like the sixty-five thousand for the, um, investigating the Bryce Farm Road. Culvert. They wouldn't let us replace it, but then now they're gonna give us sixty-five thousand dollars to look at it. But the same problem is on Lake Road two. So that's a, I'm probably gonna have to go after that. Water goes right down on the lake road. Age of life, oh.
Yes. The next one is to, uh, sign a invoice for, from, uh, master regional planning for the Small Communities Open Space Planning Grant.
Yeah.
Is the end.
Now, the CBDG.
No, this is CBG. We're signing CBDG.
Okay. Oh, I skipped up ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like a motion to sign.
Yeah, CBDG. Sign, 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 sign.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Making some progress.
That's awesome.
We had a good meeting on the municipal vulnerability grant as well.
That's the one that Kathy brought to late this afternoon, Clarence, who's-
Oh, okay. We'll let Clarence do the next one.
The open space planning there.
Oh, yeah. So are we applying or receiving already?
Well, I'm signing, signing off. I, you know.
Signing off on the application.
I believe that's what it is, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Our next one here, I think I'll let Clarence take over. This is for, to sign the CMGRPC, Small Communities Open Space-
Right. So our open space plan ten years ago was done by CMRPC. And, um, what we have, I just want to make doubly sure what we're doing. Yes, this is the application. Yeah. So what, where, where we are is, as we've talked about open space and planning, and we talked about the campground and how that would work into this, how the recreation activities work into this. What this is, is this is the application to go after the money for the grant, the, the actual doing of work. And so what this, uh, will do is by December timeframe, we should receive this grant, and that that would then, um, allow for the organization to complete the open space plan, which would also, because of this particular activity and what, how they want it done, it really tries to drive you to things like the campground or other activities, or, or maybe some improvements to the playground, you know, those kinds of things where additional monies would be available. So similar to Bess, where you're going out with a planning grant, and then based on the planning grant, it allows you to go get some more money, uh, for different projects. So I would, I would recommend that we sign the application.
Okay. I'll, I'll make that. Okay. And all in favor of signing this grant?
Aye. And I think that's my cover.
Oh, that's you, just-
Yeah, that's, that's a couple of them. And it basically says that we're interested to work with CMRPC, as we did ten years ago. And then the difference of ten years ago to today is they put some teeth in this that you actually have to do something at the end. And fortunately, we have the campground that we have to do something about.
Yes, we have.
Or the, the rec folks have plans for the playground, so.
Now, this has, we have, we need signatures here from, uh, conservation.
Yes. While he's here, we'll have him sign it.
Can you, what, sign this, please? And then we'll probably need one more, or water.
Well, we can get that tomorrow, yeah.
Okay, can you, sign it?
I can hear you.
Okay. I'll definitely mention it tomorrow.
Yeah, our earlier work with the, the folks to do the planning, the earlier planning, it just supports the grant. So it, it should be a, a no-brainer to move forward.
That's good. Thank you for going after this grant, yes. The next one here is, uh, special permit.
Just one, so.
Just one.
Oh, I'm trying to bring that pack back to you.
Oh, okay. It's a special permit for, the event will be six, nine, nineteen, for Quabac Pond. And this is from the Northern Center Bass Angles. And I'd like a motion to-
Second.
-have Beth sign it. Uh, do we have anything on the others that we have to do?
Nothing.
Yes? You okay?
Oh, I apologize, because I know that you all were willing to have the, um, meeting on the Tuesday of town meeting at another location, because I had a work conflict. But my work conflict had just backed, backed itself all the way up to Monday. So I won't be able to, um, attend that Tuesday meeting anyway. So if you wanna move it to Monday or Wednesday or what have you.
And that's for next month, right?
Yeah, that was-
That's the, that's the one that's on election day.
Well, maybe we should even-
On the number six. It, well, yeah.
Well, we, I think I'll, I'll be out of, um, town for a few days. So why don't we just cancel it altogether? I mean, you mean you can be here?
I can't.
I can't be here either, because I'm gonna be, I'm going away for a few days.
And I can't do it by myself, so.
I can do it. So go hand for it. I mean-
I don't know that much on anyways. And even if there is, I mean, if it's something little, we can take care of it on the ninth or the, the meeting right before the special.
So we're gonna have, we're gonna have a, a meeting just before the special, yeah.
So we have to do-
The specials is seven, so we'll meet at what, six-thirty? If there's anything to do.
Yep.
Okay, that sounds good.
Special's at six-thirty, I think.
Oh, is it?
Right.
Six-thirty?
Especially six-thirty.
So we'll meet at seven, then? Or at six?
Yes.
I mean, we'll be, I'm sorry, we'll meet at, we'll meet at six o'clock.
Yeah, that's only posted for six anyway.
Oh, okay.
We'll post it for six.
Yeah, it's in the, um, break comment this week.
Okay.
Were we meeting as a group prior, is it six-thirty?
Yeah, six, yeah, yeah. We'll be meeting at six, because the meeting's at six-thirty.
Okay.
So you should probably post one too also, because it'll be joint. Okay, we have correspondence, it's the Bridge Inspection Report. And this is for, um- Okay, we have correspondence, it's the bridge inspection report, and this is for, um, this was sent to, uh, Herb Chafee, Highway Superintendent, and this is the bridge inspection report for the South Pond Road and South Pond Inlet, it says, "Mr. Chafee, as part of the Massachusetts Bridge Inspection Program, MassDOT, Highway Division performs the inspection of municipality over bridges that have a clear span of 20 feet or greater. These bridges are scheduled to be inspected every two years or less. In review of the attached report, please note the deficiencies highlighted for your immediate attention. For your records, there's a copy of the recent bridge inspection field report for the reference municipality-owned bridge. Repair, rehabilitation, or reconstruction of any bridges to address the deficiencies report is the owner slash custodian's responsibility. Chapter 90 monies may be used for this purpose. Questions regarding the contents of the report may be directed to the District Bridge Inspection Engineer, Mahum Azizi, at 508-929-3822, and this is signed by Barry Lawren, District Three Highway Superintendent."
And the highway already has a copy.
And the highway already has a copy.
One more.
One more in here too, okay, and then...
Would you mind passing that one down? I would just like to scan it while we're here.
And this is another one, uh, from the Department of Housing and Community Development, and, "Dear Mrs. Lincoln, I am writing to advise that your application to the Housing Choice Small Town Capital Grant for FY 2019 was not funded. This was a very competitive round in which requests exceeded available funds by over 1.8 million, and unfortunately, your application was not among those we were able to fund. We received 33 applications and awarded 12 grants. Please check back on the housing webpage in the spring of 2019 for more information, uh, about the 20, FY 2020 program."
That was for the Snowcleats, the one that Kathy applied for?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and this is from Chris Putchman, Housing Choice Director.
You go after some, you get some.
Karen, would you be kind enough to check with Herb and find out if this is the bridge inspection where he has already gone back and done some of the work in order to start to address the deficiencies, or if this is an additional one? Because I know that I'd had some discussions with him surrounding some of it. Um, the, one other thing I should have brought up very quickly under other, and it's kind of correspondence, is the, the group of citizens that's interested in advising on long-term strategy for, uh, affordable housing, has offered to write, at least like cooperatively draft the charter, are you all okay with me working with them to draft the charter for that group? As we talked about at the last meeting.
Which group?
The folks that want to help with coming up with like a affordable housing strategy for Brookfield, so...
Yeah, yeah, they wait your rest today.
Yeah, I have a problem.
That'd be good.
Great.
Anything else, if any? Okay, wait, well, motion two at, what is it, about seven-twenty-three to adjourn this, the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.